Second, and we'll have Todd come pray for us. When our on-air light comes.
Brother Todd.
Brother Todd. Pastor Todd Martin. Well, welcome to the Xenia City Council here on April 25th. And to start us off, we're going to have Pastor Todd Martin from Liberty Life Church come and pray for us. If you'd all please stand.
Let's bow our heads. Father, we're so thankful for your grace today. Been thinking about that all day. And Lord, I just thank you for your mercy and how that you are giving us wisdom on each and everything that is done tonight. Lord, I pray for strength over this council, over our city, and protection. And we're just so grateful for you. I pray that everything that we say and do tonight will glorify you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Amen. Thanks, Todd. If you'd like to face the American flag, and Councilman Crawford will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we be seated? All right, we'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. And let's go ahead and start with our roll call.
Vice President Smith.
Here.
Councilman Crawford.
Here.
Councilwoman Cerise.
Present.
Councilman Reynolds.
Here.
Councilman Dean.
Mayor Mays.
Here.
President Urschel.
Here. I had spoken to Councilman Dean, and he's engaged with his new wife this week on their honeymoon. And so, he'd asked if he could be excused. So, congratulations to Levi and his spouse. And I'd just like to make a motion that we excuse him for the evening.
I agree that we excuse Councilman Dean.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All right, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilwoman Cerise.
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Urschel.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. Next item is approval of our minutes from our last meeting on April 11th. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Great. We, Councilman Reynolds made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by the Vice President. Any comments before we vote? Okay, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilwoman Cerise.
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Stand.
President Urschel.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. Thank you so much. We do not have any special presentations tonight. Next item is audience comments. If you'd like to address the council, feel free to come to the podium, state your name and address. And you have three to five minutes to bring any issues you'd like to to the council. Just remind folks that this is not an interactive time, but is a time for you to present concerns or recommendations to the council. So would anybody like to come and bring something to the council at this time? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and press on. Next item is old business. First is ordinance 2024-08. We'll be having a public hearing before we vote on that tonight. This is authorizing the execution of lease agreements of city-owned land for farm use on Lower Bellbrook Road to Doug Costeward and on Teller Road to Fairlands, Inc. Mr. Assistant City Manager. And I'll just make a note that Brent is ill today as well and had called to be excused. And so Jared, thanks for filling in for him tonight.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the last of several legislative steps we've taken on these properties. The intent all along has been to continue to hold on to these properties for farm use and lease them out to farmers to farm on. That relieves the city of maintenance obligations and keeps them in productive use if the city ever needed them in the future for anything. So these properties were discussed with Property Management Committee on March 14th, which concurred with this recommendation to council. And so staff is recommending following a public hearing tonight that we approve this ordinance authorizing these two leases.
Great. And we've been, we, the one on Lower Bellbrook, we've been leasing for some time. This will be the first time with the lease with the one on Teller.
Correct, yes.
Okay, great. Let's go ahead and we'll open the public hearing at this time. If you would like to come and address the council about this ordinance, either in favor or against, or just have some observations, please feel free to come and take the podium at this time. All right, seeing that we have no one, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to approve the ordinance?
I move for passage.
Move for passage with the Vice President. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Crawford. All right, any questions or comments before we vote? Okay, let's call the vote.
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilwoman Cerise.
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Urschel.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. Next item is ordinance 2024-09. That was introduced by Councilman Crawford at our last meeting. Tonight is a public hearing before we vote on this as well. And this is authorizing the grant of perpetual highway easement and a temporary construction easement to the Ohio Department of Transportation on a portion of the city-owned Little Miami Scenic Trail. Mr. Assistant City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. As council is aware, the new Great Council State Park is under construction in Old Town just to the north of Xenia. And following, or as part of the construction, ODOT's looking for some property so that they can construct a bikeway pedestrian bridge to connect the interpretive center to the city-owned bike trail across 68. So as part of this project, they're looking for a temporary easement for .522 acres and a permanent easement for .054 acres of city property. Both of these easements have very little value to the city. They're in floodplains and they don't impede any access on the bike path. Further connection of the interpretive center to the bike path will help the city with tourism and whatnot. So the city has, staff has no concerns with these requests from ODOT. So staff is recommending council conduct a public hearing on this this evening and then approve the ordinance, approving the both of these easements to ODOT.
Okay. Let's go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. If anyone has any comments or discussion about this they'd like to present to the council, please come to the podium. Seeing as we have no one, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. Do I have a motion for approval? Moved by the mayor. Do I have a second?
Second, please.
Seconded by Councilwoman Cerise. Any questions or comments before we vote? So just as a little more background, this is not funded by the municipality, it's not funded by the township, it's not funded by the county, it's being funded by the state to a very extravagant number, but it's also is not necessarily looking for any approval of any of our local organizations. And so, as you said, it is, there is a benefit, you know, to being able to get from the bike path over to the interpretive center. So. All right, well seeing we have no more questions or comments, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilwoman Cerise.
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Urschel.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Next item under new business, we have ordinance 2024-10. This is an introduction this evening. This is amending section 260.13(c) and section 260.15(a) of chapter 260 titled Personnel of the City's Administrative Code. Mr. Assistant City Manager and perhaps our Law Director as well, would you guys like to comment on this?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. As council is aware, the employment market is tight, and wages, insurance, work-life balance all continue to be top priorities for employees and future employees. So this ordinance is recommended by the Administrative Steering Committee, and it's making two changes essentially. First, the city has an existing policy for recognizing prior employment and prior service credit. Currently, that's capped at six years, and it only recognizes the past six years for public service work in the public sector. So this would change that to recognizing other eligible time beyond the six years, as well as including relevant private sector work as well in hiring. So the benefit to an employee is they would be able to take the experience they have and accrue vacation at a higher rate so that, you know, they're not starting over and they would be more likely to switch to the city of Xenia instead of starting over at a lower accrual rate. They could move in at a comparable rate to what they would have at a prior company. The second change is for longevity. So currently, not all of our employees, but our non-union and some of our bargaining units have longevity. Currently, it's, comes into effect after five years of service with the city, and it's $175 payout once per year, and then it increases based on years of service with the city. So the Steering Committee is recommending a change from $175 to $350 for that five-year mark. Overall, these are minor changes, but I think they would mean a lot and be helpful to employees. The dollar value is, you know, less than $7,000 likely. It's hard to know exactly where that'll go. So it is a minor budget impact, but I think it'll help in terms of recruitment and retention of employees. So on behalf of the Administrative Steering Committee, I request somebody introduce us tonight and then have a public hearing and vote scheduled next meeting, May 9th. And I don't know if you guys have anything to add?
Thank you, covered. Jared, so the private experience isn't automatic, it'll be dependent upon the supervisor to decide.
Yeah, and it needs to be related work. So it's a little subjective, but yes.
Will this affect just non-union or?
This is just for non-union. It currently, some of these benefits are already in collective bargaining agreements, so it does bring non-union up to where several bargaining units already are getting this benefit.
Have already negotiated, right.
But not 100% of employees, so yes.
Yeah, this, the vacation provision is already in lease, both the officers and the sergeants. It's also in the dispatch and fire agreement, so it's in those public safety contracts where it probably is the most applicable because you're going to have a lot of people working for other entities that would be qualified, obviously, to work in our department. And we'd love to offer that benefit to make it attractive for them to transfer here to the city. But yeah, in most of those other bargaining agreements, this is already in place. Council's already approved these changes, so. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, would someone like to move for introduction this evening?
Introduce.
Introduced by the mayor? Thank you. Next item is resolution 2024-025, and this is authorizing the renewal of the city's property and liability insurance through the public entities pool of Ohio for a period of one year effective May 1st, 2024. Jared?
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is an annually reoccurring item council sees every year. It's for a one-year term for the city's property and liability insurance. So this covers all the city facilities, assets, machinery, vehicles, for insurance coverage as well as liability for city properties, employees, city volunteers, all of us here tonight. So this is citywide coverage. The city for many years has used PEP, the Public Entities Pool of Ohio, and they use a local broker, Montgomery Insurance and Investments, to kind of follow through and organize our plan and provide customer service. And we're satisfied with them. Staff has worked with them over the past couple of months, and they've gone through all of our assets, all of our properties, everything, made sure it's up to date, and we're properly covered on everything, and worked through several different policies and whatnot just to limit our liability and exposure. So the insurance coverage is set to begin May 1st, and the contract amount is $393,261, and that's spread across almost every fund in the city.
Right.
It covers everything. So staff is recommending council pass resolution 2425 tonight, authorizing execution of the renewal contract for property and liability insurance with PEP through Montgomery Insurance for a one-year term effective May 1st, 2024.
Jared, do you have a sense of how often we actually file, our claims are filed?
There's a lot of claims filed against the city. Few of them turn into big legal issues, but we get claims, you know, I hit a pothole, and they file a claim with their insurance company, ours, and they go back and forth. And a lot of that, you know, amounts to nothing but paperwork and hassle, but it's nice to know we're covered if, when things do happen.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Don't you ever get involved with those, those claims or those handled by the insurance?
Typically, it's something that gets sent to the insurance company. I don't, unless they refuse, you know, they deny the claim.
Right.
At that point, a lot of times we'll get threatened, okay, we're going to sue the city, and that's, that's the point I get involved. But if it's been turned into the insurance for their review, I typically don't get involved in that.
Okay.
Carly's very good about making me aware of them so that they're on my radar.
Right, right, right.
But yeah, I typically don't interfere with the insurance company's review of the claims.
All right, would someone like to make a motion for the resolution?
Mr. President, I move to introduce resolution 2024-025.
Great. Moved by Councilman Reynolds. Do I have a second?
I will second that.
Seconded by Councilwoman Cerise. Any other questions or comments before we take the vote? All right, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilwoman Cerise.
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Urschel.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. Next is a procedural motion to reappoint Rick Hilliard to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Councilman Crawford.
Yes, this is a procedural motion. Rick Hilliard has served on BZA for, since January of 2019. The passage, well, this, there was an ordinance that was passed in the Xenia Code that affected the boards, the committees, and commissions for, for the terms that are at large were required to be staggered, not more than two members at one time would run into what would be an expiration. To accomplish this, the council actually appointed Mr. Hilliard to a one-year term back in March.
Oh, okay.
And now we're up, now he's up, and he has expressed a desire to, to serve on a four-year term, and his expiration date would be 2028. Actually, the vote here has to be, has to be voted upon through council. The recommendation is to reappoint Rick Hilliard to a four-year term, and that expiration date would be 2028 from today, from this year.
Want to say something?
Rick Hilliard is a fantastic citizen.
Yeah.
He's very involved in our community. He is a friend. I've been very impressed with his knowledge. He, he doesn't just show up to a meeting, he's done his homework. So I'm very appreciative. He's got deep roots here in Xenia, and he's very active, very involved, and I highly respect him.
Absolutely. Me being new to the BZA, he's been very supportive for me, and he was encouraging when I was running for my election. So he's a very likable guy, very, I think he represents the committee in a very professional manner. I very much appreciate it there.
And once again, you know, these, these aren't paid positions, these are just citizens that are willing to step up and do some pretty heavy lifting. As a matter of fact, many times with the BZA, they are the quart final of appeal on items, and so they have to take things that they're doing very seriously because it will affect people's property and plans and those kind of things, too. And I think Rick has, Rick has taken that very seriously, those responsibilities. So, great, all right. Well, who'd like to make a motion to reappoint Rick Hilliard to the Board of Zoning Appeals?
I would like to make that motion.
Great. Moved by James. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by, by Councilman Reynolds. Any other questions or comments before we vote? All right, let's call the vote.
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilwoman Cerise.
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Urschel.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. All right, next item is our appointed officials' reports. Let's start with our Finance Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing to share this evening.
Any questions for Ryan? List of other items we'll go over during the work session.
Sure.
Yep. Madam Law Director.
I have nothing to report unless council has any questions for me.
Okay. Questions or comments for council? And I just want to say thank you for supporting us in the committee meetings we've had the last couple of weeks. It's been really helpful, and especially the preparation material that you gave us was extremely helpful, too. So thank you for that. All right, Mr. Assistant City Manager.
Just two things of reminding the public. Our Spring Fling event is this Saturday from noon to 5:00 p.m. It's a free event. The high school band will be out there. There'll be animals giving away flowers for Mother's Day to kids.
Wow.
A large expanded craft show, so a lot more vendors and shopping options, food trucks. It's supposed to be 80 degrees and sunny, so encourage everybody to, to come on out noon to 5:00 p.m. this Saturday. And then, one last thing, the tornado, 50th anniversary tornado artifacts are in the last few days of being on display here at the city building, so those will be up through the end of the month, which is next week, and then they'll be taken down. So feel free to have, have folks stop in. There's a lot of cool things to look through and just peruse before those go back in storage.
Right. So will this portion of the street be blocked off here?
Yes, so, so typical street closures for these events, the downtown will be closed. It will cause some traffic issues, but detours will be posted. The streets will be closed most of the day on Saturday, downtown Maine and Detroit.
Maine and Detroit.
Yeah.
Okay, both intersections, yeah.
First block.
Well, last year was amazing with the vendors that came out, and it's just, just a great opportunity to go, spend some time with your family and hang out and visit with other folks in the community as well, too, so.
Yeah.
Sir, do you want any other comments from, from your crew planning this?
If, we are still looking for a couple of volunteers to man some bouncy houses. We could use a few extra hands, so if anybody is out there who is interested, please contact the city sooner than later. We have some people that came forward that are going to help with Saturday morning setup, but it's going to be a great day. And don't forget that the Tree Committee will be down at Devil Win, and they are handing out, oh man, a lot of.
Tree saplings.
Tree saplings.
Yeah.
In conjunction with Spring Fling and Arbor Day, Arbir Day, as they like to call it, so.
Oh, at Devil Win, got it.
Do you get it now?
Right. Yes, I got it. Thank you.
So when you're, they're going to be doing that, I believe, from 2:00 to 6:00.
Yeah.
So while you're doing the festival, stop by Devil Win, get your tree sapling.
Yeah.
And a beer.
Yeah.
I don't know. Arbor, arbor.
That's all I have.
All right. Thanks so much.
Can we get a complimentary tree?
They're all free.
They're all free?
They're all free.
Wow, isn't that great?
Yeah. They'll, they'll, they've got a couple hundred, 400? 400?
400?
Some of them are like 18 and just tall.
Wow.
What kind of trees?
All kinds.
That's a Nelson question.
I'm sorry.
Loblawlys, pine trees.
Oh, that's awesome.
He's got quite a spectrum of animals.
Tilted trees, there's shrubs, there's large trees, medium trees, and then shrubs. So you can select.
It's very exciting.
Yeah.
Yep.
Good.
The Tree Committee does a fantastic job. They're planting a tree tomorrow at Warner. Well, they're going to plant it tomorrow, they normally would plant it, but the Tree Committee is, they're doing it for Warner, holding off until construction is finished. But the Tree Committee, which is a part of XREC, they're, they make sure to plant a tree every year for Arbor Day.
Agreed.
Yep.
Well, let's go to council comments at this time, and any reports from your committees. So we'll start down with Councilwoman Cerise.
I don't have anything at this time, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Reynolds?
Yeah, we had a Budget Committee meeting last week, and then we have just a quick powwow today. We discussed 2025 budget priorities. During one of the committees, we also had a chat with Judge McNamie about the court, court finances and the employment opportunities within the court, so.
Great, thanks.
That is all.
Good, good. James?
We had a BZA meeting this week, and it was, it was really old business that got brought, that re, that we had to re-entertain and reconsider. Obviously, I'm just the chair, I don't get, I don't have a say in this. But anyway, the, the first one was a case, it was old business that the, he was looking, the gentleman was looking for a variance for a garage against his property line initially. He wanted a six-foot variance, he was required to have a 10. It was actually turned down by the group for some very good reasons, the reasons he really wanted the variance. This just didn't really pass the code. And then the, the second one was basically a six-foot fence wanting to be done facing the Hill Street side. This was a different request. That met all the categories for, except for maybe four different considerations. And the group actually did a pretty lengthy discussion and consideration on this one because of safety to the, to the residents. And, and she presented a very nice case, and we approved, or they approved the variance for that. So anyway, that was it.
Great, thank you. Mr. Vice President?
All right, well, I, only, only thing I really have to bring up is just to thank Councilman Reynolds and President Urschel for your time today. We had, as Councilman Reynolds mentioned, we had a budget meeting from 4:30 to 6:00. This was just setting budget priorities that was with just council and not with staff. And so we, we had some really good discussion and looking for, to hopefully give out some good direction for our budget in 2025. And also just really thank Councilman Reynolds because you just really have hit the ball running, coming on board. Your, your knowledge level is, I'm very impressed with that, so thank you for the job that you're doing. Really, other than that, he hit on that we had a budget meeting last week as well. So a lot of times people think we just sit up here twice a month for an hour, and actually, on average, we probably meet almost weekly on some kind of details. So again, it's just a pleasure and an honor to serve our community and really looking forward to an exciting 2024 for our community.
Thank you. Madam Mayor?
Thank you, sir. The two committees, for myself, XREC, we did meet on April, I think it was, we moved it to the 9th. We had a conflict, and so we had to move that. And we mostly talked about XREC, or the Spring Fling that we've already discussed, but we did also mention the fishing derby that's coming up, so stay tuned for details on that. But we do hope that everybody comes out Saturday. And then there was no NVRPC this month, actual meeting due to the spring dinner that I'll mention a little bit later. For the last two weeks, just a couple of agenda items. On Monday, April 15th, I had an opportunity to attend the Mary and Martha Dinner at Faith Community United Methodist, and the entertainment was the high school jazz ensemble, and they
was the high school jazz ensemble. And they did a fantastic job and really just, it was, they just, they, not, not only musically do they handle themselves well, but they're just, the kids are very engaging. I was very impressed with them and how they interacted with the crowd. Tuesday, April 16th, we had an opportunity to host a meeting with Dayton Realtors and city leadership here at the cab. I think it was about seven or eight different folks from Dayton Realtors throughout the region came just to talk about what's happening in Xenia, the different development that's happening, had some questions on how we're growing and ways they could be involved. So very productive meeting. I was very excited about that. We were able to kind of showcase some properties that we have that are, that are ready, that they can be marketing as well. Wednesday, April 17th, participated in the community meal at One Bistro. And I like to mention that just because I think that's such an important thing about our community, that that is a free meal. It was designed for everybody, not just a certain sect of people, but for everyone to come out and enjoy a meal together. So One Bistro is doing a great job. And in tandem with that, the next day, I had an opportunity to host Hope Taft and take her to One Bistro for the first time and share a little bit of that vision here in our community and really the heart of Xenia. So very excited to be engaging with her that way. Thursday, April 18th, attended the Spring Awards Dinner for the NVRPC. I wanted to mention specifically that Tom Kugler, our county commissioner, won the R30 Hatted Regional Stewart Award. They just gave out two awards that night and that was one of them. It was a surprise and his family was there. It was, it was very, it was a big honor for him and for our community. Saturday, April 20th, I attended the volunteer brunch that the Xenia Adult Rec Service Center puts on that they do, they do this for all their volunteers and then name a volunteer of the year. So I wanted to congratulate Vi Foreman. She was the volunteer of the year for the Xenia Adult Center. And she's been volunteering there for a little over 15 years. She had family that came up from Georgia to surprise her and it was a lot of fun. So. Saturday, April 20th as well, attended the Green County Veterans Hall of Fame induction ceremony. I wanted to mention specifically the couple of folks that I know personally, Paul Keller, Carolyn DeStefany, and Denny Crouch were all inducted and congratulations to them. Monday, April 22nd, we participated in the mayor's lunch in Riverside. Wednesday, April 24th, attended the Green County Children's Services Blue Ribbon Breakfast and wanted to specifically mention our own Major Lon Etchison and Detective Chris Reed. They were named as the advocates of the year for Green County Children's Services. And that's just, it was a, it was a really neat ceremony. I also had an opportunity to be the presenter for New Beginnings Group Home, a home here in Xenia that works with young ladies in the 12 to 18-year-old category. They're just doing a lot of great work. So I was, and they're women that I know. It was, it was just a huge honor to be able to present that award to them. The 24th, attended a luncheon with President General, General, sorry, presenter, General Richardson. He's entitled the Re-Optimization for the Great Power Competition.
Yep.
I would love to be able to tell you what he said, but I'm going to say 80% of it was in acronyms that I don't understand. However, I did take some great notes and was able to, I say that in relation to today, I had an opportunity to have a one-on-one conversation with Colonel Richards, who is the new commander at the 88th. He just took assumption of command on April 9th and I had an opportunity to go to that. Today, we had a phone call, just some interesting things that are shifting, possibly coming to the Dayton region. So I was able to pick his brain a little bit about some specific things that could have a really big impact at Wright Pat and what he might see coming down the Pike. And then also talked to him, talked to Colonel Richards about coming to Xenia and seeing what's happening here in Xenia area, Eastern Green County, the growth that's happening, how that impacts the base, that this is a great place to live. It's very affordable comparatively. So that's a very good conversation and look for some information of hosting a meeting with him. There you go.
Great, thank you. I worked for Duke a long time ago.
He's a very smart man.
In a program we can't talk about.
Well, I couldn't talk about it if I wanted to.
He's a good guy. All right.
We need an interpreter.
That's right, very much so. Well, just want to thank all of our staff. We've got, we have 100 things going on right now. And I know in the midst of all this, getting the, the Spring Fling going, the 50th anniversary, those are just a couple of duties well above and beyond everything else. So thanks you guys for diving in. Chris, the police force, you know, for being with us through all those things as well, too. Yeah, it's a, it's a busy time of year. It's, it's a good time of year. And, and we've got a lot of things that, that are just very promising on the horizon of the city. And so we just need to all continue to work hard on each of these items and just look at the amazing progress that's happening. Tonight, we are going to have a executive session for the city council. This will be in, in line with the Ohio Revised Code 121.22G. This is a discussion about economic development assistance or activities here in the city. So we will adjourn if we, if the council, so.
President Urschul, could we also add to that, one of the other topics that is allowable under our Charter 1303(c)(1). There are some general legal matters I need to discuss with council.
Yes, as well. Thank you, thank you. So we'll be doing that. So if I have a motion from council to go to executive session?
I'll make a motion to go ahead into executive session, please.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilwoman Serise, seconded by Councilman Reynolds. Any questions or comments before we vote on that? All right, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Serise?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschul?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great, all right. Immediately following the executive session, we'll have a work session, which is public. And as is our practice on our second meeting of the month, we have a number of items just to discuss. We use these work sessions as, as a, just an opportunity to have a good conversation amongst ourselves on council and with the staff at that time. So we will be going, Jared, are we going to go to the?
Yeah, that's fine.
To the conference room? So the public will not be allowed to come in at the first portion during the executive session, but as soon as we adjourn from the executive session, go back into the regular session, to the work session, we'll come out. If there's anybody who's still out here who'd like to attend, we'll let you know and you can come in with us at that time. All right, let's take a couple of minutes break and we'll head on over there.